Gary, ready?
Yeah.
I call to order the regular meeting of the City of Aransas Pass City Council, May 3rd, 2021 at 6:00 PM. And let's all rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Dear Father, thank you, my Father, for the rain that we received, which we needed so badly in our area. We also thank you, my Father, that we're moving forward past this election, my Father. I pray, Lord, that we come together as a community to work together. The energy that we saw regarding this election, my Father, if we can channel that for the better good of Aransas Pass, my Father, I pray that that is what happens, my Father, that we come together as one. I pray that your blessing be upon us, the city council, our mayor, our city manager, city attorney, and every city staff member, my Father, that you protect them as they do their work, my Father, the work of the city, Lord, be with us, unite us, and bless us, in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna go to presentations and proclamations, and we're gonna go to an update by Eric Villarreal, LNV, Arduro, regarding Harbor Master Building.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Eric Villarreal with LNV, now Arduro, as I've mentioned. I'm filling in for Craig Forsyth, who's our chief architect on the Harbor Master Building. Just spoke to him, unfortunately, he was on jury duty, he got selected, so he was not able to attend, I think, oh, actually, he was, there was a construction meeting this morning, but unfortunately, I believe Fernando was able to attend. They did have a preliminary walkthrough with our architecture department and the contractor, and they have deemed it substantially complete. Fernando and staff are, still need to do their walkthrough this week, and so with that, there's still an opportunity for, for the city to do their final walkthrough and make sure that any punch list items get, get addressed, and those will be, those will be handled by the contractor before a final certificate of completion is issued.
Okay, so when is the final completion date?
The, the date?
Oh, yes, like the day that y'all be on the Harbor Master Building.
That, that I don't know, it'll depend on when the, the city can do their final walkthrough. I think the Harbor Master and Fernando still need a chance to, to walk through. Any issues that come up from there, when those are complete, then that's when, that's when the certificate of final completion will be, you know, will be issued to the contractor inside.
What do you consider substantially complete, what still needs to be done?
I'm not aware of, I don't have the punch list in front of me, so I don't know exactly what, what still needs to be done, but I can certainly get those answers for you.
Now, did LNV sell to Arduro, or you just moved over to Arduro?
We were, we were bought and merged with Arduro.
Okay, so you are now, okay.
Is there a date of schedule when the Harbor Master is going to do the final inspection?
Fernando is ill today, but he returns to work after this.
Okay.
Hopefully tomorrow or the next day, we can get that done.
Okay, good.
Okay, but it's not our fault that it did not get completed in time, right?
Not that I'm aware of.
All right. Okay, any other questions from anybody? Okay, we're gonna go to the next one, update by Eric Villarreal, NNV slash Arduro, regarding supervision control and data acquisition for the SCADA.
Again, Eric Villarreal, LNV Arduro. This project is a SCADA project, and it's for wastewater lift stations citywide. We did, that, that project was designed and bid, awarded. We have had our pre-construction meeting, we are waiting right now for panels and other submittal items that were ordered to be, to be shipped. The contractor has been, you know, been a lot of work on, on the, behind the scenes. They were onsite last week at all the lift stations, they will be onsite either later this week or in, beginning of, of next week to install towers. Once they get the towers for the antennas at each lift station, they'll, they'll start doing all the other work, and that, it's gonna be a new SCADA system, again, for the wastewater, wastewater lift stations and, and system that'll tie to the wastewater treatment plant for, for city staff to, to, to regulate and, and look at, you know, from, from the public works office. And so, the, the contract days, we were very honest at the pre-construction meeting, you saying, hey, Kate, these are your contract days, this is your, your final date, we're, we're still looking good right now. We did have, in that timeframe, we did, we did account for things like, you know, submittals and long lead times for certain items, and as of right now, we still look like, like we're good, it's the mid, middle of January as the end date for that one. And the, we've been transparent with city staff, saying, okay, these are the items that still need to be ordered, or not be, be ordered, these are the items that have the, the long la, lead time on those. So, you know, been very open with, with, with city staff about, you know, what's been ordered, what the process is, and where we are in the timeline for it.
Okay, and we make sure that we got the right people involved to make sure we don't get any change orders because we lack some knowledge on how you do it?
Yes, I mean, we, to date, there are no change orders. All of the equipment that, all of the equipment that was specified has been submitted, and we've approved that, and it's been ordered. There were items that, you know, because this is a FEMA project, they will only, they will only replace like-for-like, you know, and, and your, your lift stations and the SCADA system were, were in pretty bad shape, and, you know, during design, it was like, okay, do we wanna do this, do we wanna do this, you know, where do we stop? We had to stop to where it was the FEMA-covered scope of work, and so, there's, there's so much more that can be done, but we're doing it within the FEMA scope, and we did not issue, issue design or bids for anything outside of that scope.
Is it gonna be a substandard project because of that?
No. And we, again, we were open with, with city staff, saying, hey, you know, on the city's dime, do you wanna replace this, 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 and this, and it just got to be pretty substantial. So, we're, we're replacing, again, the way FEMA works is, you know, what, what was, what was damaged, you know, it's like, how far back do we wanna go, you know, with electrical, and so we, we got to a point where we felt we could justify all of the improvements to FEMA, and that's where we are.
It will be brought up to today's standards.
That's correct.
Questions from anybody, anybody got any questions? Okay, let's go. You wanna come up here, sure?
You've mentioned that you've been open with the city at every stage of the way. Are there deadlines that the city actually needs to accomplish to keep the things in schedule? Because you've alluded to it a few times, I've been very open with the city, sorry, but when you communicated that, do you give deadlines and to actual expectations of what they should be having? That was it, I just wanted to clarify the response.
I, I guess, my question, the clarification is, is have I given deadlines to, to who, the contractor or the city?
You said you've been very open with them about some of the improvements that you needed. Was that written in RF5 or RF8 of the city, and if the city needed to respond against some of the long lead items? Do you use that phrase again? I've been very open with the city about the lead tires. Have you let them know that?
Look, can you please come up here so everybody could hear, get on the mic, state your name and, and whatever.
For our 1304 North McCambeau, because you alluded that you've been open with the city in every step of the way, part of that was the long lead items. When you submitted it to the city, did you identify when they had to respond so that they don't have a delay in timing or scheduling?
Yes, all of those items have been relayed to the city via email. Now, there's not anything that the city needs to do, it's being transparent as to the contractor ordered, that, you know, on, you know, ordered the pieces of, of equipment, the, the manufacturer will deliver it, says there's a delivery date of May 31st, that, you know.
At this point, being open to the city means that there is gonna be no delay on the long lead items, as you referenced.
That's, well, no, what we're saying is that it has not affected, none of that, that time has not affected the time of the contract yet. Until those items Until those items are delivered, we can't say, you know, that the, the manufacturer says it's gonna be delivered, you know, May 15th, okay, once May 15th comes around, if, if there's still an issue.
We all understand about the delays and stuff, but as far as ordering, at the city, we've done our responsibility to give you the information you need so that you can go ahead and place the order, and at this point, there is nothing that is gonna be delayed, it's gonna end up costing us money or time from a delay, for a delay on the city or the approval of the project.
That's correct, there's nothing on, on, on the city.
Anybody else? Okay, we're gonna go to update by Eric, again, LNV slash Ardua, regarding wastewater treatment plant electrical project.
So, moving on to the wastewater treatment plant, again, a FEMA, a FEMA project was bid at the same time as, as a SCADA project, different proj, different contractors, this one is updating the electrical at the wastewater treatment plant. This one, there, again, there's been some, a lot of work on, behind the scenes, as far as we've reviewed submittals, submittals have been approved, the, the one item that the contractor is waiting on to mobilize, and it's the MCC, which is the Motor Control Center, and that's basically the heartbeat of the electrical system at the wastewater treatment plant, and so, they can't mobilize and get started until that's there. Once they replace that or begin to replace it, they're gonna have to run the wastewater treatment plant on temporary power via generator, and they're gonna have to shut down half of the plant, replace part of it, you know, move to the other part of the plant and replace that, so they wanna, they don't wanna get that started without having the MCC in, delivered, and so, that's one of those items that the manufacturer has said it's gonna ship and be delivered by May 31st, they'll, you know, begin construction right after that, it'll be, you know, four to five weeks worth of construction, if all goes well, their, their contract end date is January, I mean, July 15th, I believe, and so, that's one of those where we still feel like they're gonna finish on time, but that's one of those where they have been open with us at the beginning, we said, hey, if there's anything with a long lead time, we wanna know, you know, sooner rather than later, you know, we don't wanna know, you know, July 1st that, you know, that it, it, it still needs to be delivered, and so, we're aware of that, we said that we would certainly work with them on days because, you know, that's something that's out of their control, that's out of your control, that's out of our control, you know, as a matter of fact, we're doing one in the city of Beeville, where the MCC is being replaced, and they've got a lead time of six to eight months, we were lucky enough, we were six to eight weeks, and so, we're, we're watching that, but at this point, we're still confident that it'll be completed in, within their, their contract time.
And that was July, what date?
July 15th, I believe.
This year or next year?
This year, this year.
We just need to make sure that we have all the parts needed before we start the job, because it's one of those that, once you start and you shut down, you have to make sure you have everything in place to be able to restart up to do the other side.
And this, that, and you, you're absolutely correct on this project, once, they, they don't wanna start until they've got everything, whereas with the SCADA, they've already started, they've already been onsite, they're gonna be onsite doing towers next week, and they've, they still have items that are gonna get shipped and delivered, but it's not dependent on that, they can do, go do those things independently of, of those, you know, control panels and all those other items.
Anybody else? You wanna come up here, so we can make sure?
And state your name?
Name, not address.
Who is the contractor, and what type of plant is it?
So, can you state your name, please? Can you state your name, please?
My name is Dennis Peacock, I live at 545 South Tampa, Branson, Past Texas, and...
You're Eric?
Yes.
Okay, Eric.
So, the, the contractor on the wastewater treatment plant electrical, it's, again, it's at the wastewater treatment plant.
The wastewater.
And, and the contractor on that one is in Yadi Services, they're out of Centon, Texas, they do a lot of, a lot of electrical controls, electrical work, both, and on the SCADA system is dedicated control services. Again, both of these projects were competitively bid, and so, I think on both of them, we had almost over 12, 12 contractors on each one, and so, their qualifications and their references were checked prior to awarding the contracts to them.
Appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you, anybody else? Okay, well, thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
We're gonna go to an update by Russell Sokey, AG CM, project manager, regarding Collin Brown Harbor Broadway Project.
Hi, good evening, Council, I'll start off with apologies, and I don't have a video this, this month due to the high winds and the rain, so I'll do everything verbally for you guys. We left off, last month, we were completing the roundabout, and we were starting on Phase Three, which is Bigelow Street, and at this time, we are just about complete with all the concrete work, and what we're lacking, which will be the asphalt, that'll be placed this week, so that'll be in conjunction with Phase Four also. Phase Three is from roundabout to the existing buildings, businesses over there, and then that's the last phase, is right in front of businesses. We've been working with the businesses, making sure that they can get in and out, I don't believe we've had any real issues, I think they're all realized the work going on, and they've been very can, working with us well. So, with Phase Three and Four, we'll be laying the asphalt on both phases, that, that way we eliminate joints, and it gives you a better ride, so, the other work we'll be lacking, which is coming up, is the illumination. As soon as we get the illumination, the foundations are all in, we've got a couple that need to be still put in, and then, I'd say, probably in the next three weeks, we'll probably have the lighting done on Bigelow also, and that will probably, the, they're scheduled to be finished on August 17th, but the contractor thinks that, or they're stating to me that they think they can get done by the end of this month.
Oh, wow.
So, I'm gonna say, let's, let's, I'll meet him halfway.
There you go.
So, I, I'm, I'm thinking they'll probably be done about July, you know, by the time we get in, we finish all the work, we do the punch list, make sure that the city is satisfied with all the work that's on there, and so, everything seems to be going pretty smooth.
What, uh, what's, what's gonna be done, but because I've noticed around Turbo Street and Allen Boulevard, there's a cone in the middle of the bike trail, and a washout.
Yes, that's correct, we haven't put the asphalt in there, and we do not want any traffic going in there, we've had issues with cars trying to drive on the hike and bike path, so, we, we don't want it damaged, so, we've pretty much barricaded it all off. We have a little bit of concrete work to do to finish the islands in there, all the brick pavers and landscape pavers are complete, we understand that the city is, is putting some kind of sign or statue that's gonna go in there, so, we're, we're working with Fernando on that. On our contract, there's, there's a couple, there's trees and some bushes, so, we're thinking maybe the city might not wanna do those quite yet, so, but we're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and do the vegetation to, you know, tie things up, you know, for SW3P, keep the sand from blowing and that kinda stuff. So, once we get the asphalt done, to answer your question on that, we're still gonna keep it closed, this, we got work going on there, and it's, it's a safety issue, they do come in, you know, here and there, move the barricades around, we try to keep it safe, and of course, if they go across that, it's, it's a $500 fine if they're going around barricades. They get corrected, every, every day, we go in there and we check the barricades and barrels, make sure that they're all back in place at the end of the day.
All right, and as far as that cutout up there, I haven't been down there in quite a few days, has, uh, has there, one of y'all planning on, working on that cutout up on Allen Boulevard and the intercoastal side, 'cause I know we talked about that a couple meetings ago, how there's one on Bigelow, and we're talking about putting a cutout around Turbo Street so cars can get to where it's at.
That's correct. To, uh, put it in, in another term, you guys have requested to put driveways in, so that the public has access to go in there, and try to encourage them to use the driveways instead of jumping the curb and tearing everything up, so, we've already implemented one, it's on Bigelow Street, which we caught it before the work was done, this request was done after Allen Boulevard was completed, so, we still have to go back in there, and we have to cut the curb back out and the hike and bike path out to, to install the concrete driveway.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Is it necessary for two?
I would say yes.
Okay.
They can go down to the end, which, you know, it's no problem, but it, it's in the middle, and so, if you put a driveway in there, it gives them access to go in and out, I, I think it's, I think it's a good thing to do.
Okay.
During this last rain, we noticed that on Bigelow, the street and the sidewalks are higher elevation than the businesses, and the water is running into the businesses, what are we gonna do about that? I have...
Yes, right, what we've done is we've built according to design, and it's all been put in up to the right of way, we, we can't build past the right of way, that's, that's more private property, so, but we've, we've gone through and made sure that it drains, everything is drained, the, the road was designed as sheet drainage, no, no inlets or anything like that, so, we've addressed where the, you have the armored curbs where the water goes through the road and into the, the properties, and in some areas, we've cut a channel in there, extra work to, to get it to drain, but the, the road is actually designed for sheet drainings, it, it does go through the properties, but we've, we've taken very careful on the driveways to make sure that they're not draining into the buildings or anything, but it's hard to make something flat drain well.
I just had a complaint about it, so that's why I questioned that.
Can I ask which one?
Erickson and Jensen.
Okay, yes, okay, yeah, the, the road was designed with a foot taller in that area, and I've, I've worked with, I believe it was Mike, which is the owner, and that area is a little steep, but he says that in that area, you know, it's, it's semis that drive in and out when they have their shrimp delivered, but the other half the driveway is, is a lot flatter, which is for the, the other cars, you know, just standard cars, he's had an existing drainage issue already in that area, right, right where his main entrance in, there's, there's been a hole there, and I, I gave very careful attention to that to make sure that we did not go in there and make it any worse, so, we're, we're right at the, the, the right of way, and it, all the water that comes off the road actually does drain around their building, but he does have a hole in that area that he might wanna address.
So, you are dealing with Mike Pringali?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, now, we're gonna go to board and commission appointments, and we're gonna go to the Coastal Bend Foundation.
There's, um, on the Coastal Bend Foundation, there's two city appointees that serve on that board, those members are Karen Gale and Jay Adaway, their terms are expiring, and both are, are seeking reappointment for another two-year term.
Will I make a motion that we reappoint Jay Adaway and Karen Gale to serve on the board?
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we're gonna go to the zoning board of adjustments.
Yes, on this board, there's one vacancy in the regular membership due to the resignation of Carol Salinas, and traditionally, what the board has done, they've moved up the alternate members, currently, there's only one alternate member serving on that board, and that's Michael Moore, and staff is recommending to move Mr. Moore to the regular membership, to serve as a regular voting member.
And we're looking for two alternates now?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, I put that word out, so, okay.
Will I make a motion that we appoint Mike Moore to the zoning board of adjustments? Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All abstained.
Okay, now, we're, we're gonna go to the city manager, but we're gonna move up, okay, we're gonna move up 9-1 to this, because I believe Eric has to leave, so, we're gonna go straight into that one, which is consider and act on issuance of request for proposal for FEMA storm pump station repairs.
And I think you have some comments from the public also on this, that's the reason I was asking Eric to stay here, but I guess, if it's okay with you, Mayor and Council, if it's okay with Myron to go ahead?
Absolutely.
Thank you, my name is Myron Schrader, I live at 246 East Stoddard, and I was a little surprised when I saw this particular item come up on the agenda, I've been looking at the drainage report since I, I received it from Freedom of Information Act from the city, and I looked at, there was, I was looking at the area around the Euclid Pump Station, and I noticed some strange things in the report that didn't quite make sense, and when I saw this, I immediately started looking at the Maddox and the Goodnight Station report, and what was recommended, and it, it, it doesn't make sense either. On the first, first page there, on the Maddox Pump Station, this is all data, and that I pulled out of the, the drainage report, the drainage area that the Maddox Pump Station serves is 411 acres, that's important, because the drainage study recommends a drainage area of greater than 100 acres, the pump should be sized for a 100-year storm, the peak flow for a 100-year storm is 282,913 gallons a minute. According to the study, it also says that the pump station is severely undersized, the current pump capacity is only 18,686 gallons a minute, but it, even that pump is not operational at this time. The drainage study recommended a detailed hydrologic study, economic analysis, and pump station design, they're, based on their recommendations in the economics section, they recommended two pumps for a total of 30,000 gallons a minute. For a 24-hour period, the amount of water that needs to be removed just from the rain, accumulation of the water is 407 million gallons, pumps can only pump 43 million, that's, that's a big difference, so, is the pump undersized, or is there gonna be a detention pond that can be able to handle that difference? I don't know, and that was one of my questions, and on the last pa, oh, also, if that's true, it will take nine days, 9.4 days to remove that water. So, the de, the detailed hydrologic study performed was to understand and quantify sizing needs, I don't know if that's been done. Is detention area big enough, there was no information in the drainage study, the volume of water that the detention area will hold is not mentioned, and that leads to the questions, will the adjacent streets and property have to handle all that overflow? Are adjacent homes, buildings in danger of flooding? And really, I think, at a minimum, these, these questions need to be answered before you decide on approving the RFP, because the RFP requires a spec, you know, exactly what it is you're gonna put in, and to me, a 30,000 ga, or, let's see, what was it? Thirty, two pumps that can pump 30,000 gallons a minute, to me, is very undersized, when they say it's, the, the pump station is drastically undersized, I would more look at a tenfold increase rather than a, you know, a 15,000 gallon per minute increase, so, this, I don't even know if this, this should be designed for a 100-year storm, I don't know that it is, it could be lower. On the Goodnight Pump Station, something very similar, drainage area there is 800... Goodnight Pump Station, something very similar. Drainage area there is 80 acres. Based on the drainage study, drainage areas of less than 100 should be sized for a 25-year storm. The current pump capacity is 37,300 gallons a minute. The, that's for, um, okay, that's what they're recommending. Again, they recommended a detailed hydrologic study. The recommended pump size was 45,000. That was an increase. But for that one being drastically undersized, that difference is not very much. So I don't know if they're planning on putting in more retention that can hold all that water, or it's going to flood. I, I, I don't know. In this case, it would take five days or 4.5 days in order to pump all that, all that water out. So the questions I have is the same basically as the Goodnight property, the Goodnight Pump Station. Uh, I would think that the city would not want to have local streets and property flooded trying to handle this. And I think it should be, these pump sizes and the station sizes should be enough to handle a minimum of 25 if it's a small area and/or a 100-year flood if it's a large area. And I think, I would think these would, uh, considered large areas. And I think personally, I would like to see a 100-year, uh, flood being taken into consideration without having any flooding outside the, the drainage channels. Another point to consider is that the three pump stations can co-mingle. That is a possibility. Undersizing one or both of the pump detention areas will adversely affect other pumps and detention areas. So if we're slow on one, you're going to have to make it up on the other. Or you have to put it in the way it should be. So the question becomes, does the city want to solve the problem or repair the system to keep the status quo? And I think all of us would agree, we want to solve the problem, not, not keep it the way it is.
Right.
Because what's recommended is very close to what we have now. Uh, basically, the total increase in pump capacity, and this shocked me, was only 34% for a system that was undersized drastically. Uh, we don't know how much total water the detention area will be. Uh, so without knowing that, you can't really determine what size this is, how much water it can handle. I don't know, it never, nothing was ever mentioned in the report, and I don't know if the city has actually, uh, gone through and studied this. And I don't even know if there's been a hy- uh, hydrologic, uh, study being done regarding that. Uh, basically, I'm asking you to carefully, uh, make sure these pump stations have been designed to prevent flooding the surrounding areas before going for an RFP. Because the RFP requires you have everything specked out. So that's, that's my comments. And just wanted to let y'all know. And it's y'all's decision, not mine, but I wanted to at least put this forward.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Myron.
Very much.
My name is Carol Salinas. I live on Renz's Pass. Just a real quick question. Mr. Schroeder, Myron Schroeder did not clarify, uh, that he is an engineer and spent his life on drainage issues. He is not just an ordinary citizen like myself. Thank you.
We're lucky to have him as a citizen.
Yes, we are.
Mayor, Council, Eric Viadial again with LND, now our Dura. Uh, thank you, Mr. Schrader, for your, for your comments. We are in receipt, and I, I talked to, uh, to Gary. We're in receipt of, uh, of a bunch of, of comments and questions that were forwarded to us from Fernando, uh, Public Works Director. And we're in the process of, of addressing those items. Uh, what I wanted to clarify is that the RFP, um, that is before you today is for the two pump stations, um, that will be covered by FEMA. And as I mentioned with the previous, um, with the previous projects, the Skaten wastewater treatment plant, FEMA will only cover a certain amount. These were pump stations that were damaged with Hurricane Harvey.
They'll cover to replace whatever you have.
And so, yes, we, we, there are still a lot of questions stemming from the drainage study. Um, that was something that, that we were hired to do so that we could have, provide a, a long-range outlook for the city. Um, I, I agree with Mr. Schrader. There's, there's a, and you know, there's a lot of problems, a lot of flooding, flooding problems in Renz Pass, you know? There's, uh, you can, you can do it all. You can do what, all, everything that he said. It just takes money, right? Millions and millions and millions of dollars, right?
Yes, it is.
And my apologies, I didn't, I wasn't prepared to, to speak to this. I sort of brought the drainage study and shown you the, the cost estimate that came with, um, with all of the recommended improvements. And, um, those, uh, the drainage study is that. It's a recommendation. And it's still open to interpretation. It's still open, uh, for the city. It's, it's a guide map. Um, we want, you know, citizens, uh, who, who are knowledgeable in that to look at it and say, hey, have you thought about this? You know, certainly we will take that into account. Uh, but to be honest, right now, you don't have the money to do the improvements that we have recommended, um, in the drainage study. And so, um, the two pump stations that were damaged in Hurricane Harvey, FEMA is going to pay you to put in the same pump that was there, to replace the building that was there, uh, maybe to, um, to fix the catwalk, you know, uh, redo the electrical, uh, those types of things. But they will not pay you to put, you know, five pumps or, uh, three mega pumps, you know? They're, they're just not going to pay for that at this point. So what you've got before you is for us to put back in what was damaged by Harvey. Certainly, we know that those are undersized. We say it in our, in our drainage study. Uh, but with the intent that you can build upon as the city receives, you know, additional funds, um, you know, again, it's a roadmap. It's a, it's a guidebook to say, okay, what, what's a priority? And those priorities can change from year to year, from storm to storm, you know? It's like one side of the city could be a priority. That's what we've identified. And then something happens, something catastrophic, and the priorities change, you know? And this is a long-term, uh, long-term, um, study. You know, I think we put together a 10-year CIP plan for it. And so certainly, tho- those items are going to change. Um, and with that, you know, again, the, the city, uh, has been involved as far as reviewing, saying, hey, these are, these are the recommendations. I mean, these are the priorities. But again, as Public Works Director changes or City Manager or Council, you know, or resident input, those priorities can change. And we're, we're here to, to listen to that and take that into account. Um, but I did want to clarify that what the RFPs that are before you, um, are for, you know, to replace what was there before.
So what would be the difference to bring it back up, to bring it up to par, to be able to make everything work versus the difference of the monies that we are?
We're, we're looking, I, I think, uh, on one of them, and again, I don't have the, the, the cost, exact cost here in front of me. I think on one of them, it's like $3 million, um, just at one pump station. And so, um, and looking at, and, and Gary can, 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 um, back me up on this. Some of the cost estimates that come from FEMA are ridiculously low. And these two are ridiculously low. And, and, uh, you know, to Gary's credit, they haven't accepted that amount and said, okay, we're going to take that amount and then we're just going to go do it because it, it just didn't work. So what FEMA allows is for us to go design, uh, what they're going to cover. And then they will actually, uh, because, let's say, I think on one of these, it's only $150,000. Um, and the city could take $150,000 and say, okay, we're going to go replace it. Um, but it's not going to cover it. Okay? So what the city has decided to do is we're going to design it, design what's covered, we're going to bid it, and FEMA is going to pay 90% of that construction cost, okay? Similar to what was done on the, uh, on the water tower. And so if it's $500,000, you know, to do the improvements and to get it, you know, same, same size pump, same size building, those types of things, they're going to cover 90% of 500,000 as opposed to just giving you 150,000. Um, and I, I don't know what the other, if you still have the, um, the agreement on the other 10% with, um, with the state.
The state.
Yeah. And so the state is going to cover, I think, 75% of that 10% match. So, you know, there's going to be very little money coming out of the city of Renz's Pass. But uh, th- those are your, your options when it comes to those, these two projects. Now, all of the other, uh, drainage improvements and recommendations will not be funded by FEMA. Those are, those are things that, again, we provided the city so they can say, okay, this is a priority. How are we going to get that money? Are we going to do a bond? Are we going to do, you know, what are we going to do?
Let me understand. FEMA is going to replace the pumps, uh, under the grant, whatever, um, exactly what we have. And because we can't afford to get everything we need, these pumps can be added on, like each year, we can budget to add additional pumps, and it's not going to be a real problem to adding additional equipment to make it a little bit more?
We're, we're going to try in, in, you know, in that footprint. Um, we're, we're going to, we're going to design as best as we can to make sure that we can upgrade that, the, these pump stations when it comes time.
But it wouldn't be, would it be adding another unit, not taking that unit out and putting a new unit in? It would be adding another unit, correct?
It, it could be either one.
Yep.
Yeah, there's a, there's a lot of combinations. You could take out the pump and we're, we're going to look at, at, you know.
One example would be like a Euclid, uh, the actual pump that we have there is oversized for the sump that we have. So for us to bring it up to par, we would actually have to make a bigger sump for the to- for the pump to be able to continuously run versus it sucking the water off, turning off, turning on, turning off, turning off, because the sump is too small. And that is one of the big, uh, issues that we have at Euclid. Uh, the sump is not the size that it's supposed to be for the water that's coming in. So that's what, one of the main issues is right there, Euclid. And the only way to correct that one and bring it up to par is to make the sump bigger. That way, there's more water coming into the sump and it keeps the pump running and pumping it out.
Yeah, and that one on Maddox is the same because all that is is a 671 Detroit with a twin disc and a deep well pump. And, uh...
That's, that's why, that's why Myron is saying, are we going to have a retention pond to hold the water, to be able to, uh, hold the water while those pumps that we have right now, right now, have enough time to pump the water out?
Yeah, I don't know how you could add on to that Maddox one.
I can't see many holes on the blue line, on the blue hose. People obviously has just gone through. We need, um, whatever tape that is that they have on TV because it's spilling right back into, it's spilling right back into the road. And I sent that to Fernando at a flex tape. Yeah, because it's spilling right back into the road. A lot of it is going down into the harbor, but a lot of it is, it is not funny! But, uh, yeah.
But yes, I, I, and again, I appreciate Mr. Schrader's comments.
That's one of the things that, that we have here. Uh, do we actually go ahead, go with this or actually say, okay, let's, let's table it and let's see if we can come up with the money to make up the difference to be able to bring it up to par?
What would be the, do we have a deadline with FEMA as far as how much are they going to be telling us? How long will they wait for us to give us the money for the two? It's just a question that, if we keep, like you said, uh, Ram?
Don't have, there is no answer to that right now that we talk with them. But keep in mind, the, um, if you do the improvements, your hearing, it's not going to be cheap.
That, that's correct.
We're not talking about 100, 200,000 dollars.
Right. It's a few zeros behind it.
And we're going to address this, and we'll be talking about that in a few minutes. Uh, we can address this as the budget hearings we're going to be having and see if that's something we want to incorporate, but it ain't going to be cheap.
Hurricane season is right around the corner. We have to be prepared.
Yeah, because that, that screw pump on Maddox, I mean, you, you got to stick with that unless you yank that out, put a, I don't know, 32-inch centrifugal pump on it, but that's not going to be cheap either by a lot of money.
And, and, yeah, and FEMA won't cover that upgrade.
Yeah.
I mean, again, it's one of those, um, you know, you can decide to go with, for right now, go with what is there. Um, or you can choose to table it and, you know, kind of figure out, you know, if there's any additional funds that you can put towards this project or these projects.
James' point, I think is a good point, that is, uh, if we can get some assurance that an upgrade can occur, if, if the council decided to go with what's there now and go with what FEMA will support, uh, if there's a way to upgrade that, that's not a small point. Uh, and I didn't hear, um, Eric, I, um, I didn't hear an answer on that. If that's something that, I guess there may be no answer on that if...
He kind of danced on it.
No, uh, no, on, on, uh, on what? The, um, on upgrading?
On adding to it or, or do we have to totally upgrade? Yes. How are we going to do that?
Yeah, and, and no, what, what I said is it could be either one. We could, we could add to it, um, we'll, you know, finish the design as far as doing it that way or adding another station to it or, you know?
Or up there, going up in pump capacity.
Or, or, yeah, or changing the exact...
The bottom line is, please, we, we need to have a place to hold the water.
Absolutely.
Because you can go, you can go higher on the, on the pump, get a bigger pump. But if the sump is not there, what's the use of going with a bigger sump, a bigger pump?
Well, the one on Maddox goes into the harbor. It goes directly to the harbor.
Yeah.
And, and to, I, I didn't mean to, to seem like I was dancing around. The question, what, what I'm saying is there, there are many options. We, we have, I mean, we have not nailed down one because we were not going in that direction.
Okay.
I'd say we do it that way. We've got something right now and then we could upgrade it later on.
Hurricane season. I mean, we've got to.
Yeah.
That is a good point that they're making up there.
Yeah, we could upgrade it.
Yeah, exactly. I'm not totally agree.
Yeah, we could change that pump out. No problem. Change this hook into the existing pipe.
Okay. So Myron, what do you think about this?
I was hoping he was going, I was hoping he was going to write us a check for the difference.
Yeah. Uh, thank you for your clarification. That, when I was thinking about this, all kinds of questions came into my head as to what the plan was. And you explained it. It's because FEMA will only pay what you had.
Right.
Only replacement costs.
Right. And I understand that.
And old pumps.
Yes.
And they're not, yes.
I understand. I don't have a problem with it as long as the, the city can keep improving year to year.
Right.
I, I don't have a problem.
Budget, budget, budget.
Yeah. And it's, I understand the money. It's going to be very expensive to get that thousand cubic feet a second pump. And then you got to revamp the entire inlet system. And that's going to cost a lot too. So, yes, I understand, uh, what, what the situation is a little bit better because I was looking at it as a flood issue and not really as, you know, as how that's all handled. So, that's fine. And I think the, the way you said it with regard to improving this, add, add on or change it and keep improving. But I just didn't want it spent and then have to turn around and do something.
Right, exactly. I appreciate that. Thank you.
That was, that was the main...
Thank you, Myron.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, so, any other questions? Favor the council?
And that was nine?
Nine-one.
I make a motion that we go, uh, act on an issuance of request for proposals for FEMA storm pump station repairs.
Second?
On the favor?
Aye.
And I forgot to mention, uh, before we started, the city manager's saying that seven, seven-seven, seven-eight, and seven-nine has been removed out of the agenda. Take care.
Thank you for moving me up. Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
Now, we're going to go to seven-one, which is discussion of budget calendar for fiscal year 2021, 21, 22.
Instead of going to the entire calendar, uh, which is really actually, it's already started, want to, uh, bring your attention to, uh, one that directly impacts you, uh, the council, as well as department heads. And that's on June 18th. And we've done this for several years now, very successful in the sense that, uh, we go into the June 18th half-day meeting, that's a Friday. They're always on a Friday. They haven't been to this point anyway. And, uh, department heads come up here in this room and they give you a presentation on what their priorities are for the budget. And, uh, you listen to each one and then you prioritize what your priorities are. Uh, and we take your priorities and take that to the budget meetings. And you've appointed a, uh, a council representative already. We go into those budget meetings between department heads and the budget committee, and that's, uh, that's Vicky and Sandra and myself.
Mr. Edwards, is, is your mic on?
Oh, thank you. Yeah, thank you.
No, it is.
Yeah.
And I'm not going to repeat everything. I hope some, some... I hope some, some microphone picked that up. So, uh, so anyway, we're, that's on June 18th. And then you'll prioritize, uh, what you want to see in the budget. We take that to the budget meetings. Vicky's on it, I'm on it, Sandra's on it, finance director. Uh, and then, uh, and we follow those pretty closely, what your priorities are. As an example, what we're talking about right now is that's, and we've brought up in council meetings some other priorities, uh, that, uh, roads, for example, how do you want to prioritize that? Because there's only a certain amount of money we have to work with. And, uh, so it's a critical meeting for the budget. You are a critical part of that. We use your suggestions, uh, to, uh, to incorporate with the budget process. I'm just bringing that up as a reminder of the importance of it. It's a half-day meeting, uh, on June 18th, a Friday. It goes until about noon approximately, starts at 8:00 AM. We'll have donuts, uh, that's about the best we can do. So, uh, so it, it's, it's very enlightening. And I know some members of the public will be here also for some street issues, for example. It's important to listen to them, which you always do. And, uh, it'll be a very productive, always has been, meeting. But just want to point out, that's an important part of the calendar. Instead of walking through all those things we have to go through each time, that directly involves you, directly involves department heads, directly involves citizens. June 18th, um, here in this room, beginning at approximately 8:00 AM.
I had a question today on the May 17th meeting. It says budget public hearing. That's a, like a workshop? Is it in the evening?
No, that's just for the public to, uh, if they have any suggestions at the beginning of the process, before we get deeply into it, like to hear what their suggestions are. That gives them a specific opportunity to comment on them.
Right, so the May 17th meeting, the public is.
Absolutely.
Invited to come here and speak on budget issues?
Yeah, that's right. Last year we had a total of, no, we did have a couple of people talk on it last year. What we're doing is having one at the beginning because in the past we've had it at the end as mandated by law. But by that time, the process is over. So we're starting it at, we'll have it at the end also, but we're also having one at the beginning so we can get input before we begin, uh, get too deep into the process.
And this is in a regular city council meeting, correct?
That is, I believe that's correct.
Okay, just make sure.
It is correct, yes.
Just to make sure, okay.
Yes.
Any other questions? Okay, now we're gonna go to consider an act to request from Ramon Lopez to waive the penalty and interest of wheat lot liens for property located at Lot 22, Powell Edition, City of Aransas Pass, San Patricio County.
I think we're gonna contact him, but let me give you some background while Mary is contacting Mr. Lopez. This is a 25-foot wide piece of property that adjoins his property because one of your questions always is, what are you going to use the property for? It's a small piece of property adjoining his. He's been maintaining it for years now. So he would just make it part of his yard essentially. And I may be misstating that, but I don't think so. I think it's pretty accurate. Mr. Lopez, can you hear me by any chance? We need the other speaker over here also. If we could pass that down, okay. Mr. Lopez, can you hear what we're saying?
Uh, yes, I can.
Oh, very good, excellent. Now, we're moving speakers around to make it even easier. But I briefly explain, explain that, uh, the piece of property that you're asking for a waiver on from the city is about a 25-foot wide piece of property that adjoins your property. You've been maintaining it for years, I believe, and you're simply asking to make it part of your yard, for the lack of a better term. Am I essentially correct on that?
Yes, that, that's the short end of it. I, it's not a buildable lot. Nobody else bid on it. Like I said, it's not really, I just, uh, did own it for years and I thought, you know, I wanted to incorporate it into the house and just take care of it.
Okay. That's essentially the issue, Mayor and Council. It's not a large piece that they can build on that adjoins his property and he'll continue maintaining it. And he's been doing that for years now.
Mr. Lopez, this is Jan Moore, City Council, seat three. What did you pay for that property?
Too much. A little over $5,000.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so the amount of the lien that we're looking at without the interest is just $585?
Is that correct, Mary?
That's correct. And he's asking that the, that the council consider waiving the penalty and interest, which is about $860.
And, but he'll pay the $585?
And he'll pay the, the, yeah, the amount of the liens.
Amount of the liens.
$585.
Right, okay.
Any questions? Let me get them.
I'm okay with that.
I'm okay.
Just cleaning up the property and keeping the property, absolutely.
I'll make a motion that we waive the, the penalty and interest and Mr. Lopez just pay the $585.
I'll second.
Second?
He's second.
He's second.
Hold in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If the item passed, Mr. Lopez, I'll be in contact with you tomorrow.
Thank, thank you. Thanks, thanks to the council.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez.
Okay, now we're gonna go to consider an act on resolution of the City of Aransas Pass, Texas, finding that AEP Texas Incorporated, its application to amended distribution cost, cost recovery factors to increase distribution rates within the city should be denied. Authorizing participation with the cities served by AEP Texas, authorizing hiring of illegal counsel, finding that the city's reasonable rate case expenses shall be reimbursed by the company. Finding that the meeting at which the resolution is passed is open to the public as required by law, requiring notice of this resolution to the company and legal counsel.
This is another one of those AEP filings where they file a rate case to increase the rates. And what we're doing is we're asking the council to consider, um, denying it and in lieu of, we'll be hiring legal counsel to oversee that, that case. I think they estimate that, um, the approximate cost to the average residential customer is about $2.60.
The cost to hire the lawyer is not paid for by the city. If you remember, that's actually paid for by AEP itself at the end of the game.
Will I make a motion that we deny AEP's rate increase?
I'll second.
Hold in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we're gonna go to consider an act to designate a council member to represent the city on the Con Brown Harbor Economic Development Task, Task Force.
This is no small matter. The, um, the issue of development at Con Brown was brought up with our bonding attorneys at their firm in, um, in San Antonio prior to COVID. COVID hit and everything came to a stop. And we want to continue, renew, I should say, uh, those discussions. The bonding attorney firm that we use, Norton Rose, uh, they have an economic development section. And, uh, like to, uh, to, uh, continue with them as far as giving, working with Roxanne because Roxanne was in on the meeting we had in San Antonio with them. I'd like to continue those talks with the goal of development of, um, Con Brown with the understanding that the charter limits us as far as not being able to sell the property, can only lease the property. And so we're working on ways to accomplish that. I've met with another firm, I'll, I won't mention their name at this point, but there's several firms out there that do this. And Roxanne has brought this point up also, and that is okay. You can't sell, you can only lease, so what? There are ways around that. So that's what we want to hammer out. And, uh, to go with a, a firm that works, a development firm that does that type of thing, we'd have to bid that out, of course. But would like to have a council member, and this first renewal meeting will be virtual. And, uh, other meetings may be in person up there or they'll come down here, one of the two. But would like to have a council member, and this wasn't the case when, um, we had the first meeting with them. A council member was not a member of that committee. But I think it's wise to have a council member. For that reason, we're asking the council to appoint, uh, one of you to participate in those meetings. It's dealing with nothing less than the, um, full development of Con Brown Harbor.
I would love to sit in that board if I'm a committee of anybody.
Me too.
I mean.
I know, I think all three of us really want to.
I would definitely would like to have something to do with that.
Because I remember at the beginning when we sat down, um, the very first time and it was not part of a council. It was part of what we were going to do with the harbor and how it was going to be developed and the vision for what the harbor should be. So I would like to, I would just throw in the hat in there.
And keep in, keep in mind, what this is, is dealing with the legal foundation and then the monetary, how to accomplish that monetarily. Then we'll get into the design stuff. First, we have to know how.
The money with.
And how much it's going to cost.
Ram, you want to be on that? You want to be on that?
Could we have two?
Go ahead.
Two what?
Two members of the council?
You can have all five of you.
I think I'm gonna have you up with the budget.
Okay.
So if we have three, you'd have to just post it?
We have to post it, yes. It's up to you. Do you see any issues there, Mary, if it's three?
I mean, if you have three, that's a part of the council, it'd be a.
Well, yeah.
Probably two would be best.
Correct, but part of the legal strategy and the economic development strategy is to have a strategy that potential economic developers won't know about that you can negotiate, right? And if you have it, that's why there's an exception under the Texas Open Meetings Act that allows you to go into executive session for economic development negotiations. If we have economic development negotiations or strategy negotiations with the bond council and your city attorney with all of you in an open session, then.
Does she use?
Right, I got you.
What's the use, you're right.
I got you. I guess we would always have to just post that it was in closed session.
You might have to carry your own job.
No, go ahead.
And, and if you do two, you just can't.
We can make the meetings and.
Talk about it with anybody at, on the council.
Your advice would be just one or two?
No more than two.
My, my advice is for the city councils to be constantly informed in a closed session on what the strategy or the decisions involving economic development strategies be. But I certainly understand where Gary's coming from. It's always nice to have a representative with us. I will say that oftentimes those kind of lead projects, in my experience as a city attorney, has always been from the mayor's office.
All right, well, I guess that, I'm gonna need our mayor to be on the board.
Yes.
Okay, sure enough.
Vicky make a motion.
I made a motion. But, but all of you are required for decision makings.
Correct.
So all of you need to be involved and I think we need to update you frequently.
Yes.
But, um, you know, we, we, the mayor has gone with us before on other issues that we have been fighting for or developing in Austin and in surrounding areas as well. So this is one of those kind of roles of the mayor where he leads the group to help it. But you guys will definitely, and girls, particularly girls, will definitely be involved with the, the decision making.
Well, I'm nominating our mayor, Ram Gornis to be on that.
I'll second.
Hold in favor?
Aye.
There you go.
Okay, we're, we're gonna go to consider an act on resolution approving offer to purchase tax show property suite number S-13-1038-TX, Lot 9 Block 236, Town of Aransas Pass, San Patricio County, Texas. The property is located on North 10th Street. The bid offer was submitted by Nathaniel Mayfield in the amount of $250.
You recall, and I believe Mr. Mayfield is here, but you'll recall that you have a requirement, that you've approved a 30% requirement. This is 1701, 17.01%. But you also want to hear the purpose of the property, uh, which is why Mr. Mayfield is here and that could change the picture too. I'm assuming that's something you want to take into consideration. Mr. Mayor, if it's okay if Mr. Mayfield.
Sure. Hey, council, hi, uh, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'm Nathaniel Mayfield, human from Austin. So, um, I don't think it's going to change my, I wasn't aware that there was a, I'm sorry, a 30% of, of the.
Value of.
The valuation of it or of the, like, all the liens and interest and penalties. I'm not, I never know if it's the valuation or how it actually works.
Yeah, like if it's a thousand, it's 333.
Okay, well, I could, if we're negotiating, I could come up to that. I wasn't aware of that. So, um, but, but really, it's just, the lots are more just speculation than anything. My, uh, my great grandfather, my great grandfather lived here, you know, in something like 20 lots at one time. And then my grandmother married my grandfather, who promptly sold all of them. And so I thought it'd be kind of cool to just buy a few more lots. I do think that, uh, some of these lots are going to be, um, going up in value. So it's really just, it's just speculation. I anticipate some economic development kind of in this area. And so I don't know if I can get to 20 lots, but, uh, you know, start with a few. So that's where that came from. But I wasn't aware that there was, you know, I probably would have come in higher, but I didn't know. It's also, the valuations are different in San Patricio versus Aransas. So this is more kind of along the lines of what an Aransas lot might be valued at, which is a whole different conversation, so as far as valuations from San Patricio.
So you have no plans to develop it at this time or just that?
Just completely speculation, yeah.
So did you want to go up to the 30% at this time?
Sure.
You wanna come on?
I'm, yeah. My name is Billy Pauli, I'm out of Woodsboro, Texas. Can I get that account number again that you said?
Don't be scared to come to the mic.
The account number, my name is Billy Pauli, I'm out of Woodsboro, Texas. And I was wondering what that account number was again?
Account number for what?
With the number.
The, the suit number that you read.
Uh, suit number S-13-1038, is that the one we're looking at?
Yes, ma'am, because I had submitted a bid as well.
Oh.
For 638, was, was asking on that property. I had submitted quite a few bids on, on April 19th as well. And I was told by Glenda to come and attend this meeting tonight.
Okay.
Minebarger is here for any questions.
Ma'am, what is your purpose of that property? Is it spec, also speculation by respect?
Improved and bid, yes, yes, ma'am. I don't know, because these all have that. So I think it would be better to go by account number then. Because they're all S-13-1038.
Oh, okay.
So probably might not be on the same.
You should have the account number.
It's 53046, that's the account number.
Yeah, then, no, then that's not one of mine.
They're all fixing to be on the same one.
So yes, I would be willing to meet that 30%.
Did I say, did I hear you say you, y'all own Turtles?
Not own.
Oh.
I said we have Tubs.
Oh.
He said Derrick, Derrick Wayne, I said we have Tubs too.
That's a good thing.
Yes, ma'am.
So, okay, sorry.
Okay, so.
Kind of off there.
Wine murder, um, Steve Solcada, I don't know if this is the form to negotiate a price.
Uh, it's probably not the form to negotiate, we probably, we do the, we do the, uh, the resolution.
I'm sorry, you.
We, we'd probably be more appropriate to have him resubmit bid and then we bring it back in front of you rather than to do it in this form.
But, but as a city attorney, I can tell you that it's, it's been very important to the council to, to develop these properties. And so we're excited that you think that these properties are going to increase in value because you speculate that there's going to be development in the area. We can guarantee you that there will be development in the area and we're interested in improvements being done and not just purchasing land and holding on to it.
Sure, yeah. Well, I think, yeah, it's just access, I think, you know, the roads. I'm not sure if there's even a functional road that gets back where that was. I can't remember the exact lot, but, uh, I think things kind of get, kind of get sketchy kind of back in that area, so, yeah.
So it sounds like based on your tax foreclosure law firm that we probably need to table this and allow him to appropriately bid the way others are given the opportunity to do so.
Okay, we'll table, we'll make a motion to table, uh, what item are we at?
Seven five.
Table, uh, table seven five.
I'll second.
Hold in favor?
Aye.
Now, we're gonna go to consider an act on resolution approving offer to purchase Now, we're going to go to consider an act on resolution approving offer to purchase a sale property suite number S dash zero two dash one two seven one dash TX, one point zero, six acres, more or less out of farm lot, one lot, one land block, two eleven Burton and Danforth subdivision, San Patricio County, Texas. The property is located on Avenue A. The bid offer was submitted by Nathaniel Mayfield in the amount of four thousand dollars.
That's me again.
This, by the way, is twenty-four point thirty-five percent.
Getting closer.
Well, negotiate on this one also.
Are you also, it's just for speculation?
Yeah, and this one, I own the adjacent, I own some adjacent land at this one. So it would be kind of unifying what was originally five acres of the four acres next to it. So this would be, yeah. And again, I wasn't aware of that thirty percent, yeah. So happy to come up to that as well.
Okay.
Make a motion. I just want to make sure that we understand that's the minimum the council would consider, not that they agree to thirty percent.
You're a good attorney.
I said fifty last week, by the way.
I'll say ninety.
I say a hundred.
See you guys in Austin. So is that, I'm sorry, are you sure that's, what was it valued before?
Twenty-four point thirty-five percent.
Is it twenty-four point, I'm sorry, say again?
Twenty-four point thirty-five percent. You're very close.
What is the, I'm sorry, what was it? Because I thought it was, what was the original amount that you're looking from?
Ten, about four thousand, what I've seen here.
And what was the original amount from the, because I thought it was more like nine or ten thousand was the, was what the city had on there? I don't know that that's accurate. I think it's, I think it's higher. I think that.
Well, right here, I mean, on the paperwork submitted by Linebarger, the percent is twenty-four point thirty-five percent.
Are you sure about that?
We have the current value being sixteen thousand four hundred and thirty dollars.
You're kidding? Okay, okay, I thought it was what was, what was foreclosed upon. Are you talking valuation, the first valuation of it? Okay, and it just upped from what, though? I think it was up significantly from what I saw. I think what I've been on, I think it was something like maybe nine thousand dollars is what was in taxes and penalties and unpaid, unpaid taxes and interest and stuff like that. It certainly wasn't over ten thousand.
The, the current value, as Mr. Solcada said, is sixteen thousand four thirty, and the amount due to all entities is six thousand.
That, okay, yeah, so that's where I was kind of going off of. I didn't see the current valuation. I didn't even know the valuation for twenty twenty. Do you have that in front of you? Okay, because twenty twenty-one wasn't even available when I was looking, you know, that was just made public, I think, pretty recently on the CAD. So anyway, I couldn't know all of this, so here's what I'm saying, so, okay. All right, I guess we're going to table this too, and I'll see you guys next week or, what do you guys need? I don't know, there's a lot of candy and flowers.
Once you submit the concrete paperwork, we'll try to get you scheduled for this.
Okay, all right. Can I hang out and meet with you later?
We have to table it. Make a motion to table seven point six.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we're going to go to community enrichment. Is consider an act awarding request for proposals?
No, there's one more.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Seven, 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 eight, and seven, nine. Are we moved?
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, may I, real quick, I got a question for the gentleman. Are you the one that owns the Alan Samuel's Oil Lease over there, over here?
Oh, yeah, me, yeah. So, yeah, it's not called the Alan Samuel's Oil Lease. It's called, it's called the Usher Lease, which is my great grand, great grandfather.
I'm just curious, will these properties, they'll not be kept up like as poorly as that one would be, would it?
No, there's no, no, no reason that I would be wanting to do that, no.
Okay, because we've had a lot of complaints about that property there. It's slightly oil spilling on the land and stuff like that. It kind of is a blight on the community. That's why I bring it up.
Right, okay, well, thank you. Yeah, I'm in the process of a remediation right now, so.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Thank you.
We'd be interested in looking at the remediation. If you could give me the track IDs, chief?
Absolutely. Corey, can you get with Roxanne on that? Thank you.
We also built that fence as well. I don't know if you've noticed the fence that's up.
I did, but it doesn't cover anything.
Right, yeah. Well, I'm working with a surface owner. I had a good conversation with him. I have to understand what he needs before I can build the side fences, if that makes sense.
Cool. No, I appreciate that, because like I said, we get beat up a lot over that.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Now, we're going to go to community enrichment, right? Which is consider an act on awarding request for proposals for fireworks contractor for the city of Aransas Pass annual independent celebration and selected date.
Carrie, will you click on the memo for me? If you don't want, I'm sorry, just because I, it's so small on my phone, that it's hard for me to read. Okay, so as you all know, we went out for bids because you gave me permission to go out for bids for our annual fireworks show. We did not get any bids in for the Fourth of July, which is a Sunday. We did get two alternate dates being the second and the third from Western Enterprises. We did receive one bid. It's for twenty-two thousand dollars, same amount as last year, same, same show as last year at the harbor as well. So just looking on a recommendation for you all, if you all want to accept that bid and pick one of those two dates they have available or start the bid process over again. If we do start the bid process over again, it would be another two-week period, looking at coming back to you on Ju, June seventh to award the bid if we do get more in. But I recommend probably favor of the council for sure, but.
Well, I like Saturday.
Okay.
I do too.
So just need a motion to award the bid for Western Enterprises and for the third being the all state that you choose.
I make a motion that we accept the bid of Western Enterprises for twenty-two thousand and to be held on July the third.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Congratulations to y'all's three appointments.
Thank you.
Okay, now, we're going to go to the public safety, which is consider an act on authorizing the police chief to accept a cash donation in the amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars from the disbanded Tri-City Hundred Club to be used for needed police services or supplies as designated by the police chief.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So a group of residents, citizens from this area, Aransas Pass, Ingleside, and the Gregory area, put together a Tri-City One Hundred Club. Unfortunately, it never really did get off its feet. They did already have some events and stuff like that where monies were donated. I think the total amounts around fourteen thousand or something they got in the bank. And they're dividing that up amongst Ingleside, Gregory, and Aransas Pass PD equally. And they just need council approval to accept this item with a commitment that it will be spent for public safety services, whatever those services may be. If you approve, I'll be able to take the minutes to them and get the check. I think our cut's around three to four grand, something like that.
Do you have a fear mark for that money yet?
I, I don't, actually, that's a very small amount of money. So, no, some of the things we're looking at right now that are needed are quite a bit more expensive. We could use it towards that, though, but right now, I think it'll sit there until there's a compelling need or we'll discuss it during budgeting and see what we can work it into.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion that we authorize the police chief to accept a cash donation in an amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars from the disbanded Tri-City One Hundred Club.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we go to consider an act on awarding request for proposals for mowing and cleanup of violation properties to the Marathon Group for a one-year term, beginning May third, twenty twenty-one through May third, twenty twenty-two.
Step right up, Corey.
Corey's been looking forward to this.
He loves to speak in public.
Good evening.
Nice to knock on doors.
What's that? Oh, lock, to knock on doors, yeah. So we went out for RFPs. We received three bids from some contractors. The Marathon Group was the lowest bid. They totally understand what their responsibilities are to mow, clean up the properties, and the disposal costs will be at their cost. Trash on properties or large debris items, they'll be responsible for covering that cost to haul off. So that's my recommendation. Like I said, they are the lowest bidder, so I think we'll get more bang for the buck, if you will, with as many code violation properties that we have in the city and repeated properties.
I have a question. I have a question on this. Are, when you went out for bids, you know, did you submit any pictures of the type of properties that they would come across?
So the three bidders that contacted my office, I, I gave them a list of properties, varying in size, developed, undeveloped, bad, what our previous move, or what hasn't been touched yet compared to what our previous mowing contractor has already been staying on top of, to give them a general idea how bad the property's going to be, that way it's not a shock to them. Because we've got some really bad ones that haven't been touched yet. So to my understanding, they did go around. Their, Marathon Group, I believe is out of San Antonio, but they do have local groups that work down here. Their main office is out of Virginia. And when I spoke to him, Mr. Stewart, I believe was his name, primarily, they have crews that go and mow around the cell phone towers, the big towers around town. So they take on jobs like this to keep their guys busy. So they hit, they, they do work in Portland and the surrounding communities as well.
How often would they be coming to town?
I'm sorry?
How often would be, would they be coming into town?
It depends on the, the amount of properties I give them. I believe with the previous mowing contractor, I gave a list of ten properties per, bi-weekly, and it depends on how fast they can move and get them knocked out. Okay.
Did you get references on these people? We might want to consider looking at references and making sure that with other cities, if they're doing it, that they are following their contracts and that they haven't had problems with it. Hate to, hate to put a contractor in place and then they don't follow the plan.
Do we have it on, as far as the disclaimer that if they don't, can we fire them at any time? I guess, I, I don't know as far as that, because I just know that, what can be, what can be found on these properties? And I'm just concerned.
All kinds of things.
I want to, I don't remember reading the RFP on this. I don't know if I saw it, Corey, but a couple of, couple of things that I would be aware of, I think it's like the council member, Abrego, saying, is the big stuff that ends up on the property that you can't see until you mow the five-foot weed down? And so I know that this says light debris removal. I'm not quite sure what the word light means.
So that's basically.
That concerns me. And the other thing that, that's concerning that I'm not quite sure we need, maybe we need to take a look at again, is it would be great for the RFP and the contracts to require that the vendor remediate what we send them within a certain time period, hold them accountable to. It must, we've sent it to you upon receipt. You got to have it done within so many days. If we need to do more than one vendor because of the amount of work that we have, then we can talk about dividing it up in the city, you know, west side, north side, east side, whatever, that may, what works. But those are my two biggest concerns when I've seen with contractors, is, is how heavy the debris is, or heavy, and what is, who defines what is light and heavy. And the second is the amount of time that the contractor needs to remediate the situation upon receipt of notice that we're instructing him to remediate.
And that is kind of hard. I understand the question, but just sometimes it's difficult to tell them, I give you a list of ten properties and you have a week to get that done. You don't know until you have walked a property what you're going to find. And regardless, you cannot, I'm, I'm saying, if, if he's, if the contractor's going to take three months to finish that first list, I mean, that's a problem, you know, I would say. But it's, it's, I can see your concern, but it's hard.
But our citizens aren't going to wait three months for them to clear a property.
No, 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 but I'm just saying, it's hard to give them like.
No, there, it is normal for a city to give a contractor orders to have something remediated within a certain time period. I don't think we've done that before, but it's normal for a city to do that. And so I don't know, I don't know how the city manager wants to proceed, but those are, those are two things I would, I would like to point out.
I think this is going to require some more discussion. Say it does, or what time constraints do we have there?
Mowing list wise, I've got, bear with, quoting at least, I believe, thirty-five properties waiting to get mowed, not including any repeats. Thankfully, the grass hasn't been growing that quickly. But after the rain that we've gotten, it's going to start blossoming again. So, and we do have a lot of repeat violating properties that the property owners are just absent or have no interest in that property that we have to take care of and just leave the property.
So what we're talking about in Mayor Council is a delay until the next meeting, because a meeting on the eleventh is just to canvass the vote. We could add something there. But we're trying to keep it to that one agenda item, but we could add one item. Otherwise, we've got to go to, what is it, the seventeenth of May, and the grass is going to be pretty high by that time.
I mean, I can, I mean, we can make a motion and approve what you recommended, you know, if that's, but we just need to make sure that the, in the group that we, that you're recommending for us to approve is aware of what they can come across. And if the city attorney suggests that we put them a time limit, we've got to be pretty reasonable because you don't know what you have there until, it looks innocent, but once you start walking that property, it's, you're not, you're not sure what's there. And so that's just my concern. And this gen, this company's going to go in the hole with that. Just from what I, just from what we, I know everybody, you know, I shouldn't say, but my husband did it before and I just, and that's the reason why I'm saying forty-five dollars is, I don't think he's even going to cover his fuel.
And, and that's what I confirmed with him when we received the bids. I confirmed with each bidder to verify their bid, and he's like, yes, forty-five dollars.
I'd like to, I'd like references then.
Yeah.
Make sure that we get some references and, and know that this is a first-class.
Yeah, because the other two bids were still, one was one ninety, and the other one was like one twenty or one thirty, something like that?
I think, you're, yes, I believe you're right.
I know one ninety.
Yeah, I know that was like the highest bid.
Yeah, yeah.
It was one ninety per hour, so.
We are, I know we're in the highest mowing problem season. Yeah, we, our weeds grow really fast and they're going to go super fast with this rain. I'm trying to see if I can look up the RFP with the city secretary right now. I don't know if they're, they would be considered the sole vendor for mowing work.
I always told, he's got crews.
They could be one of the vendors, and so if we need someone now, we can hire them in as one of the vendors, but go out for additional vendors.
It almost sounds like one of those companies that mows right aways, and they've probably got a fleet of wing, bat wing tractors. I'd say if they mow around radio towers, that's what it sounds like. They probably got thirty tractors. That's what it sounds like to me. That may be why they're doing it so cheap.
Well, like I said, I, I just want to make sure that they're aware of what it's going, and if they're willing to do it for forty-five dollars.
Welcome back. How can I help you?
Large drift place.
Normally, it's in our agreement that we can terminate at any time on something such as that.
There is, you're right, Gary, there is a notice within thirty days, with thirty days' notice. I don't think our intent is to terminate, but we can at least get it started.
I make a motion that we.
You've got a question?
One of the things that needs to be considered here is when you're doing an RFP, you can also, when you send the RFP, ask the vendors and require the vendors to actually visit the sites themselves. That prevents us from the city having to incur additional expense that covers you as a contractor because now the contractor is required to.
But he didn't put it in the RFP.
When he turns in the bid, then you know that contractor has visited the site and he's looked at it. It's a guarantee for you to the council, and it also assures him to make sure that we're all on the same page as far as getting the work done. Sorry.
Because I, I know that the list goes out and it's, it's all over the place. You know, I know we need to, need to get mowing, right?
We do, we do. But we could check a little bit more into these contractors as well and check references like.
Can we add this to the May eleventh special meeting?
Yes. Yes, Mary, we have that one election, you know, the canvas, which we do every year, there's nothing to prevent us from adding this on.
You can add it.
They all provided their insurance?
Yes, ma'am.
Do your homework.
Favorably.
Thank you, Cory.
Yeah, somebody has to table it.
I make a motion that we table the, um.
Twelve.
Twelve-two, proposal for mowing and cleanup of violation properties to the Marathon Group for a one-year term, and take it back up on Monday, May eleventh, twenty twenty-one.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have a city council staff announcement, which is a special council meeting, May eleventh, twenty twenty-one, to canvass election results and.
And one other item.
So now, we're gonna go to citizen comments. Citizen comments are intended for the matter, they're not scheduled on the agenda, please limit your comments to three minutes and state your name and address for the record. Be advised that the Texas Open Meeting Act prohibits the city council from responding and discussing your comments. The law authorizes the following, make a statement of factual information, recite existing policy, advise that this subject may be placed on the agenda for a subsequent meeting.
Carol Salinas, Site Eleven, Aransas Pass, um, I was intending to bring this up with the chief at a later date, but it's really on my mind. Animal control is non-existent on the weekends, I knew that, and have been kind of involved in some of those decisions. But this last weekend, I realized that we actually need to have somebody on call when there's dogs roaming in your yard and fighting with your pets across the fence, and there's absolutely nobody who is able, under the current guidelines, to do anything about it. You just have to live with that animal running loose, and hope you can catch him time up, and keep him away from your animals or whatever. I was, I, I will discuss this at a later date with the chief, but I just, it's really on my mind this morning, I didn't sleep last night because of this issue, and I just want to mention that, thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted to introduce myself first, I think everybody now knows me by now, I am great for our, get out of the shadows and be known. I, I want to approach the council now about the dire straits that we're in as a community, each and every person here, the citizens, the annexation folks, we're in a fight for our lives with the oil industry coming in and the unregulated and regulated industry. We need to all get behind and put our problems behind us and start moving forward. Industry is here, I think everybody on the council now recognizes it's here. I don't think that anybody on the council acknowledges the fact that not only are you representing the Aransas Pass citizens, you're affecting the annex citizens, but also the county. The county residents are affected by the industry coming in, they're gonna rely on each and every one of you, like you're gonna rely on us to give you the information, the guidance of what we need. We have to fight this hard, we cannot fight what we have in front of us unless it's gonna change our semblance of life, if we can't do it together. That means the county, that means the annex folks, and that means the Aransas Pass proper, because we are fighting for our community, let it not be known. If we allow this district to turn into an industrial service district, we are all gonna change our way of life. We need to do a better job of communicating that any of the ill wills the community has, any of the questions they have, we need to get them answered. Not for one, not for two, but for all of us, because it does affect all of us. I think the reports that I've posted online over the past month, and I hope you guys have read those, it's at our back door, and we have to stop it, we have to stop it now. You've got residents of Ingleside, they're really getting affected by the ships coming in and out. The news that I put up on Harp, Rockport terminals, I don't think anybody realized even the railroad track is gonna be reactivated, the Cosmo lines, there's a lot coming at us, and we all have to stand together. What I would like to propose to the city, the staff, is to let's set up another town hall, and invite everybody in, clear the air. Nobody will wait until every question is answered, every dollar is concerned, because we're all in this together, you, me, them, and they. We have to fight as a unified voice, we can no longer cause a sensation, we have to approach it. We're looking to you five to guide us, and to give us the information, transparency, we're all adults on this site, we can handle the bad news. Give it to us, let us know what it is, so that we can bond together. I've done my introduction, there you go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else, Mary, anybody in case, uh, how y'all doing?
I make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
No, we have nothing?
Well.
For, for executive session?
Nothing else.
Well, I need a second.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion to adjourn.